Are there any changes or additions or deletions to the agenda that anyone would like to make? All right, hearing none, then we have the need to approve minutes from our September twenty sixth meeting. Would someone like to move those minutes for approval?
Sure, I so moved Joel.
Thank you, Joel. Do we have a second?
I'll second Rod.
Rod, thank you. Any comments, questions, discussion?
I'll have to abstain. I was not at the meeting last time.
Likewise. Any other comments, questions, or needs or edits? All right, hearing none, then all in favor of approving the meeting minutes from September the twenty sixth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
And I will abstain as well. Fourth item on the agenda is report from county administration, Lisa.
You're right. So some of you were on that. We have a monthly informal call with elected officials. Some of you were on that call this morning. So what my update is a bit of a repeat from what I mentioned in the call this morning. Some of you were not there, so at risk of repeating myself, I'll say that since we last met, the county legislature passed a twenty twenty five budget, which resulted in a two point seven two percent tax levy increase, which fell within the county's calculated tax cap. That is results in a tax rate decrease of approximately nine point seven nine percent. The approximate tax rate is four point four dollars and seventy nine cents per one thousand of assessed value. And it results in an increase of approximately hundred fifteen dollars and seventy nine cents on a median priced home assessed at three hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. We pegged the twenty twenty five sales tax revenues to the twenty twenty three actual revenues. So keeping things relatively flat and by the looks of things in twenty twenty four, they are, they are flat in terms of the county share sales tax revenues. In other updates, the county's broadband connect all application continues to be reviewed and we hear and understand from New York State that it's moving in a positive direction, but we have not heard anything official yet. We're looking forward to hearing more. The New York State's local government efficiency grant application is now open. And our county assessment office is planning to apply for funding to help transition its countywide assessment data to new software. And Jay Franklin, our director of assessment, plans to be in touch with municipal officials to seek letters of support for this project, which will greatly improve efficiency, transparency, and coordination. And then the last area that I wanted to provide some updates on were around sheltering. The county opened its Code Blue shelter on November twenty fifth. In the most recent days, we've had thirteen to fifteen people staying at that location. We're still utilizing motel partners to house families. We've hired and trained twenty one shelter workers to operate the Code Blue facility. And we're contracting with Allied Universal for security. Since the closure of Saint John's Community Services, we've entered into contracts with motel partners for the temporary housing assistance THA sheltering operations as well. We're operating those directly and still looking for a nonprofit shelter operator to to work with on that. But for now, we are also operating those those services directly and continuing to hire staff for those operations. And we'll be using Allied Universal to provide security for those operations as well. And then, as you may be aware, at its December third meeting, just this past Tuesday, the legislature voted to authorize the purchase of two twenty seven Cherry Street to plan and construct a hundred bed emergency shelter. We held a press conference at that location on November twenty sixth to announce the county's plans. And together with legislator Travis Brooks, who represents the first district, where this project will be located, I'll be going to the Chamber of Commerce next Monday for a meeting and Q and A session with neighbors and businesses to answer questions. And those are all the updates I have on behalf of county administration in county. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Lisa?
The only question I have, I guess is a comment, is thank you, Lisa, for your service. This will probably be the last TCOG meeting you will be attending because you are planning retirement. And we have a new county administrator coming on board. But thank you for all your dedicated service, not only as administrator, but also in your prior roles with Tompkins County.
Thank you very much.
Lisa, can I ask a question? I know this might be a little broader than we have time to go into, but for the emergency housing for the unhoused, what sort of coordination does the county try and set up with other care providers like healthcare? Or dental care or substance abuse, mental health? For people who who would be, you know, housed in this temporary housing?
Sure. For the the THA Shelter Temporary Housing Assistance. Those those funds are meant to provide funding for housing assistance and care coordination, which would, yeah, which would include, you know, case management and connection with other supports and services, including healthcare, mental health services, substance use treatment services, and et cetera, and and looking for permanent housing. The Code Blue funds are really meant for, and the sheltering program is really meant just as an open door for people to come and utilize and get out of the cold, but they don't have as many. They don't have the funding for the ongoing care coordination and case management attached, and it's really meant to be, you know, low barrier. Few questions asked, people can come through the door and have a warm place to stay overnight or during the day, so. A little different.
Two different models. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments for Lisa? All right, I also, Lisa, will echo Bob's comments. It's been a pleasure working with you these last few years and all the, all the best to you as you embark on the the next chapter of your book, as I like to say. And hope it's a, hope it's a wonderful one.
Thank, thank you very much, Rorden. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
All right, next on the agenda, we have just a couple of items. One is twenty twenty five TCOG officers. If I'm not mistaken, that's gonna be you and me, Dan, right?
Plus we need one new one.
We had talked about that.
Yeah. And then I guess that means we need a vice chair, is that correct?
Yes.
So who wants to raise their hand? So we don't have to, so we don't have to volunteer anyone.
Maybe that's why we have such a small group today.
What we've done in the past is basically had a group to sort of try to solicit interest and 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 point to somebody.
Yeah, instead of doing it on the spot.
Yeah, I kind of, I feel people on the spot, but not that it can't happen that way as well, but.
Remind me who's rotated through in the last few years, Rod, Mark, was it you as well?
Yeah, and not me.
And then you, of course, Joel.
But there's nothing to say that just because somebody was previously in the position that they can't be
Sure.
Can't re-up, so to speak.
Yeah, but it's really good to share with other municipalities.
Yes, indeed.
When would our next regular meeting be?
January. There's a proposed scheduled meetings, which were a little farther in the agenda, we're asked to review.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
It would be January twenty third.
Joel, would you, as the next most recent chair exiting, would you feel like reaching out to some folks between now and the January meeting to see if anyone might be interested in being next year's vice chair?
Sure.
See, see if you can't twist an arm somewhere.
Committee of one, yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be just as efficient as anything else.
Okay, if we wanted to move forward with Joel, we would need a mover and a seconder and a vote.
Would someone like to move that we appoint Joel to be a committee of one to search for a vice chair for next year?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you, Joel. Appreciate it. And then do we want to wait till January to move a full slate of officers, or do we want to formalize Dan and myself as co-chairs for next year now? What's, what's the preference of?
I don't think we have to. I think you sort of automatically ascend to your, your respective roles.
Joel is correct.
Okay. Excellent. I like that. So then the next item is the meeting dates proposed for next year, which are January the twenty third, March twenty seventh, May twenty second, July twenty fourth, September twenty fifth, and December fourth. Would someone like to move the approval of those dates for next year's TCOG meetings?
I'm sorry, Rorden, I have to interrupt for a moment.
Yeah.
Um, I have an announcement on behalf of Linda, Linda Woodard. So she's requested that I share with you folks the Bolton Point monthly meeting schedule, and that's because they meet, their meetings conflict with TCOG currently, the time schedule. So I have here that they, I should mention that meetings are scheduled for the first Thursday, following the first Tuesday of the month. And the meetings can be moved to the following Thursday if they conflict with a holiday. And the twenty twenty five Bolton Point Monthly Meeting Commission is January ninth, February sixth, March sixth, April third, let's see, do they line up? June fifth, July third, August seventh, September fourth, November sixth, and December fourth. So it looks like just the December fourth meeting would be of concern. That's all. Just to be considered while we make this decision.
Anyone be opposed to making next December's TCOG meeting Thursday, the eleventh? Just push it out a week?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we can do that.
Go ahead.
Just got to add an amendment, so I I move that we do that. Amend the calendar to 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 move that December meeting to the
December eleventh?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to
Making the amendment?
Make the amendment to the proposed calendar for next year. Moving the December date from the fourth to the eleventh. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, then, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Perhaps this is a it's somewhat tangential to the motion, but I wonder whether we have given any thought to whether this every other month meeting schedule is something we want to commit to on an ongoing basis or not.
As opposed to quarterly?
Well, we were meeting monthly once upon a time. We we went to this every other month thing in order to allow the committees to meet in alternating months. And that does work. I'm not sure it's as effective now as it was initially, but just raising the question.
Yeah, anyone, anyone else have any thoughts or input?
I don't feel a strong need for a monthly meeting. I think every other gives us time to, you know, do our work and come back and report.
That's what I was gonna say as well.
Likewise. Yeah.
Okay, that's like a reaffirmation.
Any thought, yea or nay, to quarterly meetings and delegating more work to the committees in between, or is every other month feel good to everyone?
I like it the way it is.
I think every other month is is about right. I, I like that.
Okay.
Okay.
So the motion in the second, or the motion on the floor before us is to change one date only on the proposed calendar. That's moving December fourth to December eleventh. Are there any other comments or questions or thoughts on that? Okay, well, hearing none, then all in favor of making that change to the calendar as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And do we need to formally adopt the calendar then as amended?
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve next year's TCOG meeting calendar as just amended. Would someone like to move that?
I'd be happy to.
And I'll second. Thank you. Bob with a second, thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you, everybody. Committee reports, starting with cybersecurity and municipal IT.
Hi, everyone. So we are still looking at some dates. Initially, we were looking at December and then realized, of course, December is a terrible month to have anything related to anything that doesn't have to be done in order to have a conversation about different approaches that different code departments are using in order to process permits. So we're going to be looking at doing that in early twenty twenty five, probably February range. But Joel and I have had an interesting dialogue, the email. We haven't had a chance to talk in person, but he raised some really interesting concepts. And so, Joel, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot, if you wouldn't mind relating to the group, what you you brought to my attention, which I thought was a really interesting idea, but I think we need some, some feedback would benefit, we would benefit from some feedback, I should say.
Yeah, what I was remarking was that at the last meeting, you may recall, Lauren Cottrell did a really great job of of outlining the the things that the county's doing and and essentially it came off as a list of recommendations for how one could most effectively handle cybersecurity and and meeting IT needs. And and my, my, my follow on thought was, well, how do we how do we take advantage of this, this expertise? And then maybe use it as a a way of collaborating? And that would, I'm thinking about, you know, what, how could the county perhaps facilitate our meet our individual municipalities meeting our IT and cybersecurity needs? Since it's a, it's a bit of a heavy lift for the smaller municipalities to to effectively position ourselves to for dealing with these things. I mean, we make a stab at it, but it sure seems like something that was ripe for consideration, particularly in light of, I imagine everybody got the same communication from the was it the Office of State Controller? A couple of days ago, indicating that there's, there's money available for intermunicipal cooperative ventures, which included, you know, much of interest to us, both IT, cybersecurity, and emergency medical services. All topics which have been a focus of interest for this group. And it seems like maybe the time is ripe to think about how we might take advantage of those, that opportunity. So that's why I approached Caitlin about it, seeing how maybe we should brainstorm how to do that. Did I misrepresent myself terribly, Caitlin, or?
No, no, that is a, that is an excellent rendition for somebody who didn't know I was gonna put him on the spot. What I brought up is, is that a couple of years ago, and back in twenty twenty one, the, the town of Ulysses received a pretty, pretty rough audit related to cybersecurity and technology. We're glad nothing was wrong financially, but they did have a lot of things that they want to change in our system, and we've undertaken that. We, at that point, we had some very soft conversations with the county about were there ways to work together, or were there services we could piggyback on? And we were honestly, I think, pretty effectively rebuffed in that. So we've gone forward and complied with what the comptroller wanted, and quite honestly, it's expensive. It's expensive ongoing. I think we're, we're, we're in a good place, so I'm proud of the work we've done, but I think there there, there might be some, some benefit to some municipalities, but I also know that there are other municipalities at the table who, you know, have the ability to have staff in IT and who are are already running probably a pretty robust thing. So I guess this was us kind of coming to the table to see if there's anybody specifically interested in approaching the starting some kind of cooperative arrangement, or do people feel like their municipalities are are already pretty comfortable where they are? I think there would need to be some level of magnitude to justify approaching the county in in some capacity beyond laser fish. So just trying to get a sense of that to see if it's worth approaching. Don't all talk at once?
Right.
Thoughts from anyone else?
Caitlin, we're one of those liking municipalities. We have two IT folks, I'm sorry. But we're always happy to be part of conversation. I, I think you and John Little may have had a conversation back then. I mean, if there's if there's knowledge sharing that we can be part of, we're very happy to, you know, so that other people aren't trying to figure out some of what our IT folks have had to figure out. So even though we might not be interested at the same level, we could certainly see the benefit of being part of the conversation.
Well, I mean, the town of Ulysses has always been an incredibly generous partner and and cooperator, so thank you.
Yeah, one, one of the things that occurred to me is that the, the, I mean, the county is so obviously on top of the situation that they might be, be willing to, to critique you know, what we are individually doing to to point out areas where where we're not measuring up, if you were, where where there's opportunities for for improvement, that we ourselves are not in a good position to assess. And then whether or not the county is the one that, 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 you know, fills in the gaps, or or it would be a valuable service just to, just to do that kind of evaluation to to let us know, you know, not, you know, what, what, what they're doing differently and and why it may or may not be important for us to be looking to do the same sort of thing.
Anyone else? Yeah, I mean, I think overall, you and I've talked about this, Caitlin, I think I think anywhere where we can save time, money, or effort through some type of collaboration is good, but I also think that there are unique needs. I mean, not every municipality has a police department, for instance, and and the IT needs between law enforcement and the DA's office and all of those things are are different. So if there, if there was a way to scale it in such a way that we could save fifty percent of what we're paying, I think that that would be worthwhile. If we're gonna save, you know, nothing, or, or ten percent, then it would, it would kind of depend on what accommodations or compromises might need to be made in order to achieve that that savings. Since, since both you and I have just gone through this in the last couple of years, it's almost like, well,
Yeah.
where, 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 where are the savings?
Well, and where's the pressure?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we wouldn't have done it, quite honestly, if we hadn't gotten a comptroller's report that said we had to, because it's, it's a heavy lift.
We wouldn't have done it if you hadn't gotten your comptroller's report.
There you go. Welcome. You'll get a better comptroller's report if they come for you.
Yeah.
Yes, I, this is Mark. Yeah, so I you know, we, we contract for IT services and are I, I would just need to know more as far as like, you know, are we, you know, if if, if the comptroller came here, you know, would it, would there be a lot of red flags? I, you know, we have security measures in place, so I just, yeah, I like, I'm, I'm willing to learn more and open to a conversation about this. I always think, you know, if we can share services, that's a good thing, but I I'm, I, I need to know more about where where we stand relative to best practices and so, yeah.
Mm hmm. Which is exactly what I was hoping we could explore. But I, perhaps Caitlin, the next month or so, we can do this between the meetings, kind of.
Sure. Yeah.
Brainstorming.
Absolutely.
Okay, sounds good. Mark, emergency planning and preparedness.
Uh, sure, so I guess I'll give a brief report and then so the, the, the county did pass the, the, the resolution that we put forward for emergency services as a, an essential service. And at the, our subcommittee meetings, we're having, you know, discussions about the provision, the equitable provision of ambulance services throughout the, throughout the county. So that discussion is ongoing. I I was exited the last meeting midway from a power outage. So I don't know, I think, I think Dan was able to stay on that meeting if, if he has anything he wants to add.
Yeah, we're starting to expand the conversations with participation from the city. Pat Cool from City Council, who formerly worked for Bang's Ambulance, is participating in our meetings, as is Dryden Ambulance, the chair of the board from Dryden Ambulance. And it's helping us get a more practitioner view on what's going on with EMS and ambulance services, in particular in the county. And I would just add to what Mark just said about the county adopting our resolution. You know, that's the resolution that we prepared, came out of our committee, came before this whole committee. And and there was a complete embrace of the idea that this should be an essential service in New York State. And the county should go ahead with that sort of thinking right now. That the county legislators see the big picture, and and they don't want weak spots in our EMS safety net across the county. They've already taken action on light rescue, as we all know. But the, the real challenge is, is ambulance and transport and the idea that we have a few over text, literally and figuratively, ambulance services in the county, and we, we need a more equitable structure for ensuring that we get ambulances to every corner of the county in a, in a reasonable amount of time. And that the services that are being provided are supported in a, in a fair manner, so we don't have certain municipalities taking the load for calls outside of their, their district. And I'll say this every time I get a chance, you know, forty percent of Dryden ambulance calls go of Dryden ambulance calls go outside of our town. And we we raise one point two million dollars to support Dryden ambulance every year, and we invest that in Dryden taxpayer dollars, but forty percent of those calls are going outside of our town. And I was glad that the legislature heard us say that and listened and and I I from my feel, from from our county reps and from the folks in the room that night, they didn't think that was a fair situation.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, too, as well. You know, Dryden ambulance is responding forty percent outside of district. Truismberg ambulance is about fifteen percent. There's really not a lot of fluctuation in that. So that's that's really it's trending in the wrong direction, but it also is a consistent number. So we we see where the need is. I do know that two days ago, on the third, Truismberg ambulance took four calls in the city of Ithaca. So it's it's it the conversation needs to continue and and I see Dan Klein there, so I appreciate the county legislators legislature's efforts. The the Rapid Medical Response Program is having a significant positive impact. But there's still more more work yet to be done and more conversations to be had. And the elephant in the room is, and I see there's no one here from the city, the elephant in the room is the city of Ithaca. My my conversations with Mayor Cantelmo have always been positive. But the city is fortunate in that they've never had to think about running an ambulance service. And I think that day may be on on a horizon, I won't say it's very close, but it's something that that city leadership probably needs to be wrangled into the conversation more often. What does it look like if you, the city of Ithaca, need to begin suddenly providing ambulance service? Dryden ambulance and Truismberg ambulance don't have the capacity to cover the city of Ithaca on a twenty four seven basis. So I think the county could be very helpful in participating, if not brokering, that conversation. So that's that's obviously, I've been leaning on this issue for a while, as has has have many of us, but I think maybe twenty twenty five is the year, particularly as the county continues to evaluate the value of the R M R program. I think maybe twenty twenty five would be a good year. While we're pressuring Albany to do all the things we're pressuring Albany to do, not the least of which is throw some money our way so that we can support all of this. But I think also really trying to have the city be a meaningful participant at the table. I think that would be a good effort going forward.
Well said. And I'll just add that legislation that we're encouraging in Albany would require counties to show that there are plans. You know, to to establish, you know, this is our plan for E M S and ambulance services. And if there aren't plans, they have to make plans. And you know, that's that's the stick and and but this is a stick that's needed. We already do it with fire. So it's not like there's not a model out there already for an essential service.
And I'll also I just want I'll also just add one other thing because I can't help myself. I I very much enjoy Bob Lynch's writing, just in case anyone is not following him. His writing style is fantastic. I am sensitive to the fact that anything that comes out of Albany tends to want to not be helpful from a financial standpoint. That's just their M O. And so that's why we've been pushing hard to get financial support from them. But the reality is, it's going to be the rural municipalities that are the hardest hit if if Bangs, in particular, continues to be or continues to have difficulty in in their staffing and coverage and so on. And that's why Truman's Burgers is responding to Enfield on a regular basis. So it's all one big tightly interwoven mess. And and I think the more we can do as a group collectively to to make some positive changes would be a good thing.
Yeah. Thanks, Roy. Yeah, thanks, Dan. Yeah, I, yeah. It's it's so discombobulated, so.
I think Bob has his hand up and then Dan Klein and then Joel.
I I was not at the last T C O G meeting when this resolution passed, but I was at the county legislature when they dealt with the resolution and adopted it. And I know that I had a little difference of opinion with Dan Lamb and Mark Whitmer about it. And I think those differences are being fleshed out a little bit in today's discussion. I have no problem with the E M S being an emergency service, but it just can't fall financially on the backs of smaller towns, poorer towns like ours in Enfield. I realize that Dryden's at a disadvantage. They're subsidizing areas outside their town. Truman'sburg is as well. And that's got to be resolved. And the place for this kind of coordination and funding centrality would be county government. I just worry that New York State may not go that way. And New York State tends to go the way it wants to go. And so that was why I had a concern here. I remember that back year or two ago, when Tompkins County was considering the R M R program, there was the option of an ambulance service, which was dismissed because it cost too much money. And maybe we have to revisit that. I think the county is the place for it to be centered. And again, if I may look ahead a month or two, we've got twenty twenty six funding for the R M R program to consider because we dealt with twenty twenty five and the grant. But presuming that the service will continue into twenty twenty six, there may be the talk of cost sharing there. So it all is wrapped up in one big ball, and we're going to have to try to resolve it in twenty twenty five.
Great. Thank you, Bob. And I, I
Sorry, Mike.
I did hear your comments at the legislator legislature's meeting and totally understood where you were coming from. So I did address that, my comments that I think, as has been said, I think in the comments today that you know, this is a difficult problem and it but it, you know, we're gonna have to work it out. So it's it doesn't fall on the shoulders unfairly of of anyone and and it's done in a in a in a fair way. So so thank you.
I I think I just gotta throw oh, sorry. I thought you meant Dan Lamb, but I I'll get a comment in in a minute.
Yeah, Dan Klein.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for mentioning the Rapid Medical Response Program. It is doing what it was what it was meant to do, and it's successful. And unfortunately, you know, that's a rare enough occurrence that it's worthwhile to like, to congratulate ourselves. As far as the idea of E M S as a mandated service, you know, there was a lot of movement at the state last year about this, you know, it's finally reached critical mass that enough people are talking about that some things did happen. And I really hope and expect that that will be happening again during this budget season in New York State. So I'll be looking for that. And I would be willing and more than happy to draw the city of Ithaca into these discussions. However, I think it would probably make sense to wait to see what happens at the state level on this topic. So please feel free to nudge me again after the state budget and say, okay, this did happen or didn't happen. It's now the time to start these conversations locally again.
Great. Thanks, Dan. Joel, did you have your hand up a second earlier? I think you're on.
Yeah, some word I had to say has already been said, but what I was gonna remark is that at the state level, there does seem to be at least on people's radar now. And there's concern, well, there's there seems to be an impetus to deal with the issue regionally, but I think it's a positive development that we should perhaps encourage further as much as we can.
Sure. Dan Lamb.
Yeah, so I I appreciate what you just said, Dan Klein. Our concern is our taxpayers and and the fairness of this. And, you know, I I'm being polite if I say our Dryden ambulance folks are unhappy. They are they are angry at this situation, and they're demanding that their legislators do something about it. They feel unfairly taken advantage of. And so I guess I would ask this group or or anyone that wants to comment, what would you have me tell our Dryden ambulance folks? And what would you have me tell our taxpayers? We we pay an ambulance tax and Dryden residents. Other municipalities don't have that. I I think it's pretty clear what needs to have take place here. And no one's gonna like the sound of this. But we need a countywide ambulance tax. It shouldn't be the town of Dryden ambulance tax subsidizing neighboring municipalities. When we say the county should take the lead, I I think that's a great idea, but then they need to have a dedicated source of funding to take that lead. And and people like us will describe to our constituents why that's important. And and the county will have to sell it to the residents as well. But I I don't see any other way for this to get resolved than to do that. And I've tried to think of every angle on this. And I'm open to ideas, but I I just ask you to put yourselves in the town of Dryden's position. And what would you have us do? I mean, our ambulance will always respond to a call. We're we we're a caring community and we'll go take those calls outside of our district. But there's an element of unfairness here that we've got to fix.
Caitlin, then back to Joel and Mark.
Thanks. Yeah, to to piggyback on on Dan Lamb's comments. While it's the Truman'sburg ambulance company, the the biggest payer into that is the town of Ulysses. And I had to take a budget this year in order to to not not use one time funds for ongoing expenses. I had to take a budget that exceeded the tax cap in Ulysses. It's the first time in Ulysses history. And we didn't do it cavalierly and and we can we could have many conversations about the value of the tax cap and and what it actually means. But I can tell you, the biggest costs, the biggest drivers of cost are health related. And so for us, forty percent of our budget is fire and E M S. And those are essential services, and we believe in them. But the problem is, that's putting significant ongoing pressure on our budget, and we are helping fund fifteen percent of calls going outside the service area. And again, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be supportive of good neighbors. But I have to have, I have to go back to to my constituents and explain to them that their taxes continue to go up because of these ongoing pressures that are outside of our control. And what are the options? Not having fire, I mean, we certainly have that fire, but not having E M S is certainly not something anybody has ever come to me for. You know, but the choices are, we can continue to fund them and we can start cutting deep into other services we provide. Or we have to collectively continue to pressure moving towards a model that is financially responsible for everybody, because this model is not sustainable. For Ulysses, we can keep going for a while, but but there will be a time where we hit a wall where we can't, or you're gonna get a board who won't support it, or a constituency who can't shoulder the taxes anymore, and we will have to look at an alternative model. And if Truman'sburg ambulance is underfunded because of that, and Dryden ambulance is underfunded because of that, the system that we are all benefiting from right now will collapse. So this is not an option. We have to find a new direction moving forward, whether or not, quite frankly, the state takes leadership responsibility that they should. But New York State is one of the is in top five states for unfunded mandates and passing burdens on to lower governments. So I, you know, trust me, I'm skeptical when I when I think that the New York State is necessarily going to fund this and take leadership role. I would be pleasantly surprised to see that. So I think that we need to not just wait for the state. We need to be moving forward and taking whatever proactive action we can locally to take responsibility for our own situation.
Just one quick comment, both to what Dan and Dan Lamb and Caitlin said, you know, it's one thing to be able to convince your residents that the ever escalating costs are worthwhile because of what the service happens to be. It adds an inarguable point if you say, and oh, by the way, X percent of those dollars are to provide service that aren't for you. They're for someone completely, you know, someone in a completely different municipality. You are paying for them to receive this service. And that that is, you know, the the meetings we've had, that is what Dryden ambulance is is really, really, really concerned about. Joel.
I give my ignorance, but what role does private pay play in 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 covering the cost of the services? I mean, I'm talking about, you know, individuals and also insurance companies.
Very, very simple breakdown, Joel. The average ambulance cost, if you factor all pieces in roughly fifteen hundred dollars per call to get the ambulance and the paramedics to a scene. Again, depending on the agency and the type of call, it could be more or less. But on average, it's about fifteen hundred dollars per call is the cost to the agency. Private insurance reimburses about nine hundred and fifty to eleven hundred dollars of that. Medicare is about three hundred and fifty dollar reimbursement. Medicaid is a hundred and twenty seven something. So so running an ambulance service is a losing proposition unless unless you have a very high call volume. And you are able to maintain and manage your payroll in such a way that you can manage that high call volume without ramping up your payroll costs. And you do other things like interfacility transports for hospitals, which have a much, much higher reimbursement rate.
And and density. I think that's what your board implies by call volume. If you're spread out in a rural community, then the the costs go up.
Yeah. Well, we'll go Mike Murphy, then Mark.
To me, the county, I pay taxes to the county. I pay a tax to the town and to the village. But I would think that the logical thing is that what other people are alluding to is it should be the county should be the funnel, that they're taxing and dispersing the money to the ambulances. And maybe that would inquire maybe another ambulance being located someplace else that the county could do with that tax money. But otherwise, it's a it's an unfair situation and it it strives off the cost unfairly. And that's what we've been talking about all along. So and I'm I'm agreeing, I don't think the state will send us any money. That's it.
Well, I think just, you know, one of the reasons why it's helpful to have these conversations with this group is I think we're one of only two or three counties in the entire state that are actively discussing these things, number one. Number two, there is a version of this movie where Albany does kick in money, but then they're gonna want to be told or they're gonna want to be sold on how that money is allocated. Are they really going to, and this has been part of the part of the problem with getting the bills that that Anna Kellis has pushed over the last few years to get them any traction is is Albany really going to figure out a way to disperse funds to hundreds and hundreds of individual agencies? Or are they gonna put the counties on the hook to figure it out? And maybe we have to develop the model where Albany can say, you know, here's fifteen or twenty or thirty or a hundred million dollars a year, Tompkins County. You make sure ambulance is provided. And if Tompkins County wants to stand up an agency, good luck. And if Tompkins County instead wants to help pay the existing agencies to make sure that they're able to provide the coverage without overburdening their taxpayers, then then maybe maybe we already have that model in place. But those are the kinds of things where Albany is not going to solve the problem. They're gonna have to be sold on a solution that we come up with. And and that I'm a hundred percent convinced of. And if that can include funding, then then all the better. Mark?
Great. Thanks, Roy. And I think that's a good point. I get I I don't really have, I don't think, anything new to add, except to say, I I think the idea of a county tax implies or has to be tied to sort of region countywide administration of ambulance services. So you know, that I, you know, so that as I think Dan said earlier, so that provision of services is done in a in a logical way that provides service equitably throughout in the in the city and in rural areas. So, yeah, that's when when I think about, you know, the the county tax, I I can't, I can't separate that from from the idea that there needs to be sort of a some sort of organizational or administrative change in in how at at the county level. So and I think others are are kind of saying the same thing. So.
Yeah, Bob.
Now, I hear Dan and I hear Caitlin loud and clear, and they both raise valid points that their communities are subsidizing communities like Enfield that are outside of their own jurisdiction. And the only real fair way to finance this, I think, is through a county ambulance tax. I agree. If you start doing it on a town by town basis, the accounting is going to be a nightmare, for one thing, because who's subsidizing? because who's subsidizing whom? And as I said to the legislature, it could lead to rivalries that would not be healthy for us. But I think that a countywide ambulance tax, and if we could take the lead in that regard, I hate to impose new taxes, but I think the fairest way to do it is based on the ability to pay and the overall countywide tax base fairly apportions that burden. And I know the city might not like that, but the fact is that a lot of the real estate value is located within or close to the city of Ithaca. And it would impose less burdens on places like Groton and Enfield and Newfield. And it would be more equitable. So if we gotta go some way that way, I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, Mark.
Can I just add on to that, that I, I would consider that not a new tax, but just a tax done in a different way, so.
Dan?
Yeah, two things. So, Dan Klein, thanks for not running out of the room. We would be breaking a barrier, we'd be the first county in New York to have a countywide ambulance tax. But other counties are supporting ambulance services through their general funds. Why I think ambulance tax is a smart way to go is the residents will accept it. We've, you know, we get complaints all the time in Dryden about various things that we do. We never get a complaint about the ambulance tax. People feel a certain amount of pride and a certain amount of purpose in, in our ambulance service. And I think that the county could convey that and communicate that and we would certainly help. I think it's something that's seen as a public necessity. And increasingly, your 911 calls, nearly half of those are approaching EMS or ambulance related calls. So it's, it's a growing burden on, on the EMS services. And I think people kind of expect that to be there, but they're not really sure who's going to show up. So I think in that regard, it's, it's something that we could sell and, and people would accept as, as a policy. And I've already started conversations with our, our county legislator, Greg Mezzi. And he didn't run out of room, he's listening. And we want to gather evidence and, and show how this could be constructed. And oh, lastly, you know, I just want to say, if this essential services bill were to become law, what it would ask is, or direct is that counties show that there is a plan. It doesn't necessarily need to mean a, a new bureaucracy at the county level. It just has to show that there is a memorandum of understanding, so that could be as, as simple as, you know, Dryden ambulance is going to cover this, this and this area. And this is the contractual arrangement the county can show to prove that. And a similar arrangement with Bangs or, or Truemansburg Ambulance or Groton Ambulance.
All right. Well, stay tuned. I think in the interest of time, we'll, we'll move along. But, but yes, thanks, thanks, Dan Klein, for continuing to keep your finger on the pulse of this issue, because it's, it's, it's not going anywhere, it's not going away. And, and depending on what Albany in their infinite wisdom decides to do this spring, we'll, we may have some decisions to make locally and preferably regionally. You know, there's, one of the reasons why Dryden is outside of district a lot is because they're going to, to Cortland and elsewhere. So it's a, it's a, it's a large conversation that needs to continue. Energy Committee.
This is much easier than the previous one. We've been on hiatus for several months. We've really been waiting for the Public Service Commission to approve community choice aggregation. We're calling it Tompkins Green Energy Network. They still haven't. We don't know what the holdup is. Every month we think it will be on their agenda. So when that happens, then there will be work to do that we want to reach out to other municipalities. In the meantime, if somebody wants to focus on another energy issue, please go ahead. So otherwise, we'll just stay on hiatus mode for a bit.
Okay. Yeah, questions or comments for Rod? All right, thanks, Rod. Transportation Committee.
Yes, good afternoon. I have some figures that are fairly encouraging. Patty Poist at TCAT passed them along. Apparently TCAT is starting to rebound finally from the pandemic. It's slow, of course, but according to a report that they put out in October, the most recent ridership levels are eighty-one point nine percent of where they were pre-pandemic. They broke that down between campus corridors, downtown and rural. And of course, the campus corridor is still down about thirty percent, but the rural routes are down forty-nine point seven percent from, from 2019. And that, the overall, even year to year, twenty-three to twenty-four, the rural routes are down by more than the, the city is. In fact, the campus corridor, year to year, twenty-three to twenty-four, is up forty-nine point five percent, but rural is down five point eight percent. So it's, it's, I don't know the reason why rural is down. They don't tell me that, but there must be a reason, maybe they know. And so just so you know, that it's starting to improve, but the recovery remains slow. And they also say that they have recently taken possession, TCAT, of five electric diesel hybrid buses given to them by a transit service in Albany. And they will be likely ready for operation here in January. So it's overall positive, but still guarded, and I'll, I'll park it there right now.
I'm answer questions for Bob. Yeah, Mark.
Yes, Mark.
Hey, hey, Bob, I, do you know if the rural routes like Route 52 have returned to the, to the number of trips that they had pre-COVID?
I don't know about the trips. I don't know about the number of trips. I could give you the rider data, but I don't know about the, the number of trips, of course. If the number of trips are down, I know Enfield's Route 20 is down. And that if your, if your number of trips are down, then of course your ridership is going to be down.
Yeah, and I, I think that might be true for 52. I've noticed like, you know, one time when I wanted to take it, that, that it was prohibitive, that I, I couldn't do it, so.
That may be a major reason. Of course, there'll always be, there'll always be a Route 10, even though it may not run as often, the circulator going from campus to downtown. But people will just wait at the bus stop and take the next Route 10 that comes along. It's not quite so simple if you're standing out in a snowbank in Enfield.
Exactly, yeah. That's, that's where we want to be, but I don't know how to get there.
Other comments or questions for Bob?
I guess I would comment that before the COVID, I had two or three people I knew that would, would ride the bus from Dryden down to Cornell. And I don't know if they'd be part of the rural droppage or they were part of the Cornell part, but that, you know, they used to do that and a couple of them retired. But I'm wondering if, you know, the scheduling of such has changed that, and not everybody has to go in five days a week for Cornell at times, depending on your position. So I'm wondering if that's affecting it a little bit.
I've always wondered whether it's the work from home policy that a lot of people have these days that has diminished the ridership.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Bob? All right, thanks, Bob. Next meeting agenda items. I know that we hope Joel will have found us a vice chair. Anything, anything else we'll be discussing in January? Or that we know we would like to be discussing in January?
Do we want to revisit the, the code study that was done a year ago or so? I think that might, I don't, I don't know exactly what to propose, but I, and I'm, yeah, and I, my understanding is, yeah, I would, I would be interested if there's any conversation about something that, that Joel and I have dealt with for Caroline and Danby, which is, is addressing. So I, I'm, I'm wondering if there have been any discussions about how to, if there's, if there are ways to simplify the addressing issue for new properties, for new residents. Anyway, I, I, the, I think the code study, you know, I, I would like to not let it wither and, and maybe revisit it and think about if there's anything we want to consider from that.
Okay. Yeah, Joel?
Similarly, the broadband initiative, you know, Lisa gave us an update, but just so, ongoing, but it'd be nice to know, you know, where things stand at that point and what, what, what the prospects are.
Okay. Yeah, well.
Who would, sorry, but who would report on that? I, I think that's an important thing, but we need to hear what.
Probably be looking to Nick.
Yeah, someone from the county, but then they might have an announcement on, on their state funding, right, Dan Klein?
I mean, that's our hope, but we've been, it's always been, very soon they're going to let us know, for months now.
I remember that feeling.
Bob?
I think building on the discussions that we've had today, perhaps we ought to, in, I think, you know, we ought, ought to for the month of January, if not the month of March, perhaps, deal with the ambulance issue. And because I think it's going to probably be one of the hot button topics that we're going to be discussing here in 2025. And it looks like something that needs to be done, there's an urgency for it. And I don't know who we would bring into that discussion, but perhaps we need something. I know we just dealt with it two months ago in, in a very quick way endorsing the resolution. But I think we have to try to figure out how we're going to do it. And maybe a further discussion, a more formalized discussion would be appropriate.
Yeah, Dan Klein.
I just want to say what I said before, when I said, let's wait till after the state budget, I wasn't just trying to delay the topic. It's because the state budget might entirely change the landscape of the EMS discussion. So in my opinion, it would be premature to have, start planning a plan before we know if the state's going to change the whole playing field.
Yeah, to that point, you, you all well know, I, I'm the worst person in the world at staying in my lane. I mean, there are conversations that are going to be had in January with multiple assembly members and state senators about what can be done in this to hopefully get something in the governor's budget. I mean, the Senate passed their version of the essential services bill, the Assembly did not. So are we going a straight legislative route? Are we going to try to push something through to the governor and her budget? What does the funding piece look like? What I mentioned earlier is not actually a brand new idea, is, is the funding request for individual municipal and not-for-profit agencies? Or is funding now going to pass through to the counties? So there are some things that, that are going to be discussed and, and hopefully pushed forward from the grassroots level up prior to the budget. So I, I wonder if, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Dan, and I, I would agree, except for we may be involved in those conversations. And so does TCOG want to potentially have a voice in what direction we push? Or do I just go, do I just get to be, do I just get to go rogue like I always do? I mean, that, that's really the conversation.
I guess, I guess what I'd say is, I, if TCOG wants to lobby, that's great. That's different than starting to formulate what a county EMS tax plan would look like. Those are two very different things.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I haven't seen a proposal, maybe you have, Borden, that, that would imply any sort of funding stream from Albany. I, I guess, you know, that would be great. And maybe it does happen, that this will be a funded mandate. I guess, you know, since our constituents are kind of like on the hook, I want to see us making progress. And I, I, last year I thought the, the legislature might do the, do the, do the right thing, the state level legislature, and they didn't. And I just don't want to be sitting around in June and, and having no progress on this issue and then start drafting legislation at, at the county level. I think we'll already, our, our committee should already start looking, our subcommittee, the EMS Subcommittee, our emergency preparedness Subcommittee, should start looking at models for, for an ambulance tax and, and the various ramifications and, and things that we need to take into consideration of that.
Okay. Yeah, Mike?
I'm in agreement. I, I think there should be a plan, we should go forward, try to come up with a thing. It would, you know, if I'm a legislator, I'd like to have somebody do the plan, the work for me and myself, say, hey, that's a good solution. As opposed to, well, it'd be hard to figure out a solution, so I'm with Dan. The more we try to figure out what would make sense and how we could do it and what we do, I think that's great. And maybe something come from the state and it will destroy that. But if it doesn't, or if we need to have a model, it's just like, we have the health insurance program. It's now started in one county and now it's in ten counties. It came from Tompkins County. And Dryden was the fiber control, the first one that went for fiber, for internet. There's nothing wrong with Dryden, the Tompkins County, Ulysses, everybody else coming up with a plan. I, I, I don't, I don't see waiting. And we can always scrap our plan because we don't have any power to put it in, but we can always suggest a completed plan or a good plan. So I don't, don't agree with just wait.
Okay, well, we can, we certainly won't, won't have any shortage of discussion at our January meeting on, on how or what to do. Anything else that we want to add at this time to next, the next meeting agenda? All right, then I would call for adjournment. Would someone like to move for adjournment?
I'll move.
Thanks, Dan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Hope everyone has a good holiday.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, Rod. Thanks, everybody.
It was interesting. I'm kind of curious as to what, what the.